Good evening, and welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Lenore for Tuesday, June the 3rd, 2025. Thank you for being with us tonight. We, as we get started, we normally do, we'll start with our moment of silence in a few minutes, and our pledge of allegiance. As we go to that, I would like for you to keep some different things in your thoughts and prayers tonight. First of all, the terrible shooting that happened over in Catawba County. Please think about the people involved, the families and everything that happened there. I know there's still a lot of investigation going on to that. Don't know all the details, but there was a loss of life and a number of people that were hurt, and we want to pray and keep those people in our thoughts and prayers for that. Also, Jeff Church, our public utilities director, had knee surgery today. Please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Hope he'll be walking more gingerly next time we see you as things move forward with that, but we'll keep him in our thoughts. And also, I would like to keep Reverend Jimmy Norwood in our thoughts and prayers. Jimmy turned 90 this past weekend. Nice event up at the Martin Luther King Center. Reverend Norwood is a great supporter here in Lenore and minister at a number of different churches in Caldwell County over the years, and he turned 90, and we really appreciate what he has done for our community. So please think about him as we, as we move forward. Now, please join me. Moment of silence, and remain standing for our pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we start out with a special recognition on the honor of one of our city's finest officer and Detective Parker. We are honored, and we honor you tonight. We thank you for your long service with our city. We appreciate everything you've done and what you've advanced to Lenore for protecting us. That's great job by our police department. I hope you say some good things here in a few minutes, but right now, we'd like to present this special resolution to you for your service in recognition of dedicated service. Whereas on the 14th of February, on Valentine's Day, in the year 2005, Jason Mark Parker was appointed patrol officer two for the city of Lenore Police Department by Chief Joey Reynolds, and has admirably and with great distinction served the citizens of Lenore during the tenures of three police chiefs. That prior to being hired by the city of Lenore, Jason served as a deputy for the Catawba County Sheriff's Office, a caseworker for Caldwell County Health and Human Services, and served his country as an operations specialist with the United States Navy, where he received the following medals and decorations: the National Defense Medal, Joint Meritorious Unit Medal, the Silver Reef Award, and the Southwest Asia Service Medal. That due to his diligent performance and exemplary leadership skills, Jason was promoted to master patrol and school resource officer in 2008, and transferred to investigations in 2013, where he moved up the ranks to his current position as senior detective. That Jason has been invaluable as a mentor to new officers and served in a number of capacities to include financial crimes, crime scene, and homicide investigations, special response team, crisis intervention and negotiations team, evidence custodian, gang investigators association, crime stoppers program, the dare instructor, and bike patrol. That while working for Lenore, Jason received the advanced law enforcement certificate from the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission, completed Police Law Institute, and served on a number of committees and task forces to include North Carolina anti-county counterfeiting, money laundering, and juvenile crime prevention council. That Detective Parker has played an active vital role in the community and shown his willingness to go ahead, excuse me, go above and beyond what is expected for the department, city, and community. He has received a number of accolades throughout his career to include American Legion Officer of the Year, the Golden Ticket Customer Service Award, Certificate of Merit, hostage negotiator, 20 Years Safe Driver Award, and Caldwell County Rotary Officer of the Year. That society and law enforcement has undergone many changes and challenges over the last 26 years, and Jason has stayed abreast through these changing trends to remain an effective leader, role model, and mentor to all whom he means. That Jason has humbly served the citizens of Lenore and Caldwell County and will be retiring on June 1st, 2025, which was the other day. We got you on that one time. With over 26 years of credible service in the North Carolina local government retirement system, now therefore being resolved by the authority of the mayor and the city manager, and on behalf of the city council, that Senior Detective Jason Mark Parker be an exemplary employee and is himself the epitome of the professional law enforcement officer. His contributions to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Lenore and the officers of Lenore Police Department will be held in high esteem and in remembrance by his governing body, as well as all persons impacted by his accomplishments, generosity, and compassion for those in need. This the third day of June 2025.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Honored that you spent this time with us. Wish you the best in the time.
Thank you.
There you go. Chief, I'll let you come up and say some more good things.
So it was about 3 o'clock this afternoon, and I realized that Detective Parker was retired, and I thought, you know, I can't make him show up tonight. I, I hope he's still coming. And so I texted him, and he said he was. I wanted to read, we did a department ceremony for him a week or two ago, and during his time at Hybryton High School, David Caldwell, he either paid Mr. Caldwell a lot of money to say good things about him, but Mr. Caldwell was wanting to come to his retirement and was unable to. And he sent me a text, and we read it at his retirement with the department, and I thought it, it would be good to read it tonight for council. It says, I know I've shared this story before, but I had been at Hybryton for a few months when Sandy Hook school shooting tragically occurred Friday, December 14th, 2012. The whole country was shaken. We were in shock. I called Jason that Sunday night and asked him if he could get to Hybryton early the next morning. I knew our parents and our kids would still be nervous about coming to school. That, that Monday morning, he had a, there was a driving rainstorm, torrential downpour, but at 6:30, Jason was standing at the top of the hill in front of the main office. He was standing next to his patrol car, wearing a rain slicker, getting soaked. He stayed out there until about 8:30. When he came in, he was soaking wet. He said he'd never had that many parents and students thank him. I've told that story a thousand times because it speaks volumes about Jason, Lenore PD, and all of the SROs for whom I've had the pleasure and honor to work with. I wish I could have been there in person. Congrats, Jason. Thank you, David Caldwell. And when we told that story at his other retirement for the department, one of the things I said was that's a great example of the things our SROs and our officers do on a daily basis because it's the right thing to do. It speaks highly of Jason, his commitment to the department, and his service to many different areas. The last number of years he's been in the detective division predominantly worked a lot of financial white collar crimes. Those are very detailed investigations. He's done a great job with it. So we hate to lose his experience, but we're excited for him, and he's got his wife and daughter that's here with him tonight. His son has just graduated high school, so he's excited. He's got a lot of life still, still to experience. But Jason, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want, just want to thank the city for allowing me to be of service to the community. I've spent many years here, met a lot of people, and, you know, it's, it's gonna be hard to walk away and, and, and just forget, because I'm never gonna forget. I mean, I've developed a lot of bonds and, and created a lot of memories. And I only hope that what I did for the city was, you know, is positive, as I could, could have made it. I hope that I served the community well, and that's all you can hope for as an officer, is to leave the job on a positive note, and with the respect of your officers, your elders, and the community as a whole, and, and no regrets. And, and I have none. I've, I've learned a lot from, from just the, the job as well as the people in the community, and I've enjoyed it. You know, I can't ask for a better career. So I want to thank you all for embracing me as much as I've embraced you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get one with you.
Some of the officers come up?
We'll stay back here. We'll stay back here.
Just standing, because you know where we want to be.
Say, Mayor, get over on this side. Okay. And you can come over here on this side. And Chief, you can try to do that a little bit. There we go. Can't see everybody. Y'all have to smile. All right, ready? One, two, Mayor, step to your left a little bit. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese.
There's one in every crowd.
Oh, wait, did you, did I get it?
Oh, yeah. Thanks, guys. It's always one of those bitter street times. We like to say, no, I'm sorry, we canceled all these retirements, but unfortunately, we, we can't do that, but we wish Detective Parker very, very well, and his, his family, and his, his life begins to take a different, different turn. So, all the best. Okay, we will move on to matters tonight scheduled for public hearings. Tonight is our FY 25-26 annual budget. This will be to, if you receive any public comments regarding the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, for the city of Lenore. Upon conclusion of this hearing, council will take action on adoption of the enclosed 25-26 budget ordinance as presented. So I will turn it over to, I'll open the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hildebrand if he has anything additional. I know that he's already presented the budget, unless we have any questions of him at this time?
I got a question.
Okay, just one second, we'll do that. Thank you.
Mr. Bethany Wood, or just hear the comments first?
Uh, what's, you want to hear the comments first? Okay, you're welcome to come up and...
I'd like to see a copy of that.
We can...
It's online. Been online since, I guess, May 17th.
All right, were we made aware of that?
Yes, it's been advertised in the newspaper.
Okay, oh, in the newspaper.
Plus, it's been on the website.
Okay, that's fine.
If you will give us your name and address, please, for records.
You, y'all gonna give me y'all's addresses?
Sure, it's on the website.
It's on the website, too.
I mean, because there's some stuff here, but that's fine. My name's James Patrick Aristia. I got two locations, one location in the city limits, and the others in the county. My address is 1873 Greasy Creek Road. Y'all might think I'm trying to be a little aggressive, and I'm not trying to be aggressive. I'm just very passionate about what I do. So just try to deal with me, please.
Okay.
I want to start off that we got recognized by the state this year for our disaster relief, and we get recognized, got recognized by the National Guard for what we do for them, and what we do for this town and the state. I got a few questions for y'all. I'd like to know who ran the disaster distribution hub in Caldwell County that was set up in the city limits?
This is about the budget.
Yeah, we're in, we're in the, this is the budget hearing.
So I can speak on this before y'all leave?
You can come back when we have...
All right, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, I just need to look online for the budget?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I've got my personal copy. You can have it. Give me, give me a few minutes to pull it apart, and I'll get my notes out amongst you.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to know where all this money goes.
Glad to let you know that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just to reiterate, when, when the manager presents the budget, we notify everybody through the meeting and online and through social media posts that the budget is available online. It's on the website. It's easy to find. You can download the whole thing. All the documents are there. So it's been available for several weeks.
This is Joshua Harris, our public information officer for the city of Lenore.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are, the, the public hearing is open discussing this. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Mr. Hildebrand, I'll give it back to you if you have anything you want to add to it. If you don't, you know, I mean, you've already certainly presented everything to us, so...
Yeah, listen, there's, there's questions. Again, the budget's balanced with a tax rate of 46 cent per 100, and the rescue rate in its taxes, .85 cent per 100. Water and sewer rates increases 2.3 percent, which is a dollar, I think, 28 per month on average bill, 5,000 gallons. Planted fees have been adjusted. Otherwise, no other fees have increased in the proposed budget. So that's...
Okay.
In a nutshell.
Anyone have any questions?
Another thing I think would add is there's very little debt that we're servicing built into this budget.
The only debt we have this year is a fire truck.
Yeah, and as we've gone through the budget, with a couple meetings, looks like staff's done a great job of maintaining services and honoring the work of our employees, benefits, things like that. So we have to close the hearing before we make a motion.
That's exactly right, yes. Just want to make sure that everybody's had a chance of any comments that they want to make. All right, public hearing's still open. Is anyone who would like to address the council concerning this? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to city council for any other further discussion or action concerning our budget for 25-26.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the budget for 25-26 as presented.
Thank you. Motion of Councilmember Beal that we approve the annual budget for the city of Lenore for FY 25 and 26 as presented. No discussion further. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That is unanimous. We're missing one council member tonight who's out of town, Mr. Presswood. So that would be 6-0.
Let me thank department heads, and Donna Bean especially for her work on the budget, and council for your input and time to go over it and discuss all the items. And so just want to say thank you.
Thank you, and we, the council, will ask that, add that as well. We appreciate all the work that our team has done. Donna especially leading that effort as our finance director, and all the department heads, all their staff, and everyone who takes a lot of time. We don't take this lightly. This is one of the, probably the hardest job that we have as a council, to put our budget together and, and work with our staff to do that. And we try to make sure that it is done in a correct way, and take care of the citizens of the city of Lenore. So that's why we work toward that. Chrissy, do you have a comment?
No, I was just saying thank you to Scott as well, and all his work behind that.
Totally. Thank you. That takes a leader at the top to make sure it moves forward. We appreciate that. All right, then we'll move on then. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda items. This consists of minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Item B is the minutes of the city council budget meeting of Thursday, May 22nd, as submitted. Item C is the budget amendment. This is a request for amendments to be made to the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2025, as follows. Number one, approve the utilization of additional general fund revenues for needed expenditures. Number two, approve the allocation of general fund expenditures for such obligations as professional services, equipment such as police radios, improvements to the TH Brawheal Walking Park, wetlands grant equipment, and for needed repairs for various equipment and buildings during the fiscal year. Number three is approve the reallocation of enterprise fund expenditures. And number four, approve the utilization of additional funds for Main Street revenue and expenditures for the clock tower. Item D is authorization resolution. This is for recommending of approval of an authorization resolution to authorize the city manager and the finance director to execute and accept the funding offer of session law 2024-53 for Hurricane Helene disaster relief funding grant for technical assistance for assessments and design visualization project. Note, this funding will assist in providing funds to aid in design costs for the Lenore Valdez Water Interconnect Project. Item E is the city access easement. This is for CY Real Estate LLC. The recommendation is for authorization for the city staff to grant an access easement to CY Real Estate LLC. Attention, the Lenore Golf Club for a 40-foot wide easement to be used for access and maintenance of property owned by Lenore Golf Club near Hybryton Drive, which is SR 1178 and Hotel Street, subject to the satisfaction of the city attorney and the city manager prior to formal execution of the same. Item F is for McGill Associates PA. This is for environmental assistance. Task order number three, recommendation as prepared by McGill Associates for environmental permitting assistance necessary for the OVT Pavilion Site. Item G is a contract amendment. This is with Mauer Architecture for the contract with Mauer to accommodate a fee increase of $37,500 due to mechanical electrical plumbing, MEP scope modifications at the LHS auditorium and gymnasium, and the addition of a dumpster enclosure. Item H is the sidewalk cafe permit renewal. This is for Furcot Formidable's. This is a, submitted by Furcot Formidable's, 107 Main Street, with the following conditions. Number one, current copy of certificate of liability insurance naming the city as the certificate holder must be provided to the plane department. Item two, alcoholic beverages sold and consumed in the Furcot Sidewalk Cafe shall be in social district containers according to the social district management and maintenance plan. Number three is a five-foot clear pedestrian path must be maintained to provide access to the public sidewalk adjacent to Main Street. Number four, the sidewalk cafe shall only operate during the social district hours as outlined by the social district ordinance, which is SEC Section 1392, Lenore Code of Ordinances. Number five, or any fixtures aside from the table and chairs shall be subject to the planning director's review. And the last one is item I. This is a resolution, and that was for, that we presented tonight to Senior Detective Jason Parker in honor of his recognition and, for 26 years of service to our police department and the city of Lenore. So that is your consent agenda items A through I. I will open it up for any discussion of the council or motion, either way you perceive it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve items A through I as presented.
I have a motion from Councilmember Thomas that we approve the consent agenda items presented A through I. Any other discussion? Not. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move to a time on our agenda for requests and petitions of citizens. If anyone would like to address the council at this time concerning something, this is the time to do so. Yes, sir, thank you. We appreciate that.
I'd like to know who run the disaster distribution hub in Lenore, in Caldwell County that Lenore has set up in the city limits?
It wasn't the city.
I know, it was in the county, but it was in the city limits.
Caldwell County was in...
But it was done in the city limits. Who ran it?
Caldwell County ran it.
Okay.
It's in charge of the warehouse.
Yeah, who was in charge of the warehouse?
Caldwell County.
Yeah.
Who in Caldwell County?
I can't tell you that. You probably need to contact Caldwell County manager.
What do y'all know?
Caldwell County government was the one, not, not the Little West City government.
Okay. Isn't he a, a vice president of Western Piedmont Council Government?
It's got nothing to do with Caldwell County. I mean, well, Caldwell County's a member of the Western Piedmont Council.
But you're the vice president of it, too, right?
I'm the chairman, I'm actually.
All right, well, on the website...
But that's not the, you know, Caldwell County is one member of the Western Piedmont Council, as is the city of Lenore and 26 other entities.
Okay. Why, why was it, since you're not gonna be able to answer this because you're gonna say it was the county, why they went to the state, this town went to the state and asked for help, requested help as a distribution coordinator, and the state referred them to us, but they refused our help?
I don't know what answered to that. I'm sorry.
We don't make their decisions.
Okay. I know this. I get it. I get it. Which in turn costed this county and the state hub for disaster response, along with all the extra monies this county and city would have had made. We were allocated 50% of minimum space of that warehouse. We didn't get it. Does Yokefella have shower houses up and running for the homeless yet?
Yes.
When did they open them?
June, in, in May, the end of May.
No, they didn't open them in May because in May, she was supposed to have it open at the first of the month. Then, and then she announced that she was gonna do it later, and then she announced she was gonna do it the first of the month of this month.
You need to ask the Yoke, that would be taking up with Yokefella.
But ain't most of y'all part of the board at Yokefella?
No, not at all.
We're not.
We have shower rooms.
Huh?
We have shower rooms.
Yeah, I mean, we got two shower houses I've been trying to open for months with four ba, with four showers and washer and dryers that I've been putting in here. So I don't understand why we would waste funding and go buy a little two shower house and use it with only 100 gallons of water, when mine are self-contained.
Sir, you'll have to take that up with the county again.
Oh, so I gotta take up what happens in the city limits with the county?
Yes, the city of Lenore is in Caldwell County, sir. We, we are part of Caldwell County.
Yeah, but you're part of the ci, you know what goes on in your city, correct?
But we don't control everything that goes on in the city.
And then when I talk to the county, the county says they can't help what happens in the city limits. So who is in control? I mean, honestly...
I told you that.
Yeah, but they told, when I asked them these questions, they referred me back to you.
I'm not trying to argue with you, but if it's, happens in the county, and the county is in control of it, if it's something that the city of Lenore is in control of, then we will, we would...
We talked to you about it.
We could talk to you about it.
But when I talked to the county about it, there again, they referred me back to you, and y'all had no answers.
No, no, we don't have answers for what you're asking tonight because you're asking questions that concerns the county.
Y'all have never been...
is in control of it, if it's something that the city of Lenore is in control of, then we will, we would.
We could talk to you about it.
We could talk to you about it.
But when I talked to the county about it, there again, they referred me back to you, and y'all have no answers.
No, no, we don't have answers for what you're asking tonight because you're asking questions that concerns the county.
Y'all have never been able to answer one question I've asked you.
You came in here and you said you weren't trying to be difficult.
I'm not trying.
No, you are.
I'm not trying to be that way. You take it that way, I'm very passionate about what I do, but y'all have not answered a single question of mine, ever.
You don't like the answers you're getting, but we have answered them. If we don't control something, we can't give you that answer.
Y'all play the blame game, it sounds like.
No, we're not doing that, sir.
No, you're taking it that way, but that's not the case.
Okay, let's move on.
Yes, sir, please do.
So there's no several, there's no board members. There was board members, y'all have requested to sit down with me. I ain't heard from not one of you in a year and a half.
I gave you my card.
Look, and I told you to contact me, y'all stay busy.
So you have been invited to meet me at my church up the street, and I gave you my card.
Okay, just like the chief of police here, he said he wanted to sit down with me. I told him, all y'all are busy, it's easier for y'all to call and me to work in your schedule.
And that's why I gave you my card. So that's not my fault.
So we gotta call you?
That's, that's generally what happens, is if you want to have a meeting, you contact the person you want to meet with.
Okay, how about, let's go now, I got some questions about the contaminated supplies that's coming into this county that is sitting inside your city limits. All this debris that come all over western North Carolina is sitting on Virginia Street. Did y'all okay that? Because it's contaminating, what's your plans for it? I mean, because the state submitted that all the water, most of the waterways in the state of North Carolina in the western part of the state, which we are, is contaminated. So what are you going to do with this contaminated material? You want to mulch it and send it out to people in the city and in the county? Is that what we're going to do with it?
The site's leased to the county.
To what?
The site's leased to emergency management at the county to go back and run that site through the state.
Does, does Yokefella share the same lawyer as the city?
I have no clue. I haven't heard of Yokefella.
Last I, last I looked, y'all shared the exact same thing, and a bunch of y'all were board members at the city at Yokefella, so it seems like there's a conflict of interest going on in this town.
I am not a board member at Yokefella.
Nor am I.
Anybody here? None of us are board members at Yokefella.
I have served on it before, as did Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Perkins, but we are none, not any of us on the board now.
When did you leave the board?
I left the board about two years ago.
How about you?
Two years ago.
How about you, Perkins?
Two years ago.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. Y'all, y'all don't know why the showerhouse? The address, eight thirty-one, what is that?
Montclair.
Montclair Circle. What are y'all going, what's y'all's plans with that, that y'all running the homeless out of and saying you're going to condemn it? Does the back taxes just need to be paid on it?
We'll have to check, and we're not sure what you're talking about with eight thirty-one Montclair, but we will.
It's on, it's on for order tonight for abatement.
Yeah, that's why I was going to say, y'all should know, it's supposed to be on the board tonight.
Okay.
Talk about.
Yeah, I drove by the, I drove by that.
It's a minimum housing order that's coming up, yeah.
On Sunday, just to put eyes on it. I've seen that house before when I was riding with PD, and that's on the agenda tonight for a reason. Yep.
All right, so that's it for right now.
Thank you, we certainly appreciate that.
Hey, Jonathan, I'd like to get your card because I don't recall giving it to you.
Pick it up, here, right here, don't walk away.
Thank you.
That's my personal cell phone number.
Thank you.
If I don't answer, I'll call you back.
Thank you.
I'll get a time and place and I'll meet you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council tonight concerning anything? Okay, we'll move on then to reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have a family emergency. I'm gonna, my mom's had a fall.
Uh-oh.
So, um... Actually, Chief, can you call, Chief Stain? Let me go out there. I'll come right back.
We can excuse you from meeting, Don.
Yeah, we can excuse you if you need to.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Bill from the meeting.
All right, we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Bill from the meeting with, for an emergency situation.
Sorry.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, hope everything goes well. Please keep us informed, please. Okay, we'll move on then to reports of boards and commissions, and I will recognize in a few minutes, the planning administrator of the Western Piedmont Council of Government's Jennifer Cannon, who will hold the second of a public hearing to receive public comments for the FY twenty-five through twenty-nine consolidated plan for the city of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium and the FY twenty-twenty-five action plan. This consolidated plan is required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, identifies needs, outlines goals, and develops action plans and prepares budgets for the city of Lenore and the Uniform Homes Consortium for the use of community development block grant funding funds and home funds for the next five years beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine as submitted. Following items are submitted for the city council in consideration of approval, and that's the capital budget project ordinance FY twenty-twenty-five Uniform Consortium Home Program in the amount of one million, two hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-five cents as submitted, and the capital project budget ordinance FY twenty-twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars as submitted. Jennifer, welcome.
Hey.
Glad to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So this is the second of two required public hearings in order for the city to submit the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine consolidated plan and the first year twenty-twenty-five action plan for the use of the CDBG funds and the home funds. So the plan, the consolidated plan is two parts. The first year, part one is the five-year plan, twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine, that would be July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine. So some of the activities for the home program would be multifamily, chodos, there's down payment assistance for the CDBG fund section of that. You would do, we are working with the Lenore High School Complex. All these are federal funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, like you just said, we were awarded nine hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, two, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-five cents. We anticipate about three hundred thousand dollars in program income that will roll back into the program. And then for the CDBG program, we awarded one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. And those were due, like I said, for the Lenore High School Complex, and we're looking to approve that, so we'll be able to submit the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine consolidated plan.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Jennifer concerning this? This is the second public hearing, so we will, tonight we'll be taking action on these items for that. So any questions before we do that? Okay. This is a public meeting, by the way. If we, if there's any comments from the audience, we would certainly do this, it's a public meeting. All right, hearing none. I will then turn it over to council for any action or question, whatever you might have.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve both items one and two of the capital project ordinance.
Thank you. Have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to approve the capital project budget ordinance, both of these, one and two, for CBDG and the home consortium program as well. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And since Mr. Phil was excused, it'd be five-oh on that one. Rick, always glad to see you back, sir, here. Rick has retired from the council of governments after forty-three, five, two. On that. Thanks, thanks for coming and wish you the best, and thank you for leaving us, Jennifer, to take over.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor of Council, cut lives for information this evening. The summer concert series will begin this Friday, June sixth, with the band Scarlet Darlin' performing on the stage from six to ten PM, and that's on the square. And then the band Algie Friends will perform on Friday, June twentieth. Cruising event will be held on Saturday, June seventh, from three to nine PM in downtown. The city county services committee will meet on Monday, June ninth, at the J. Broyle Civic Center at noon. The economic advisory committee will meet on Tuesday, June tenth, at eight fifteen AM at J. Broyle Civic Center, and the Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, June twelfth, at six o'clock, third floor, city hall. Tonight, you have two items for action. The first one's a minimum housing order for seven oh eight Ridgeway Place Southwest. Staff recommends approval of the order of abatement directing staff to proceed with the demolition removal of a structure located at seven oh eight Ridgeway Place. That's parcel ID zero-six, two zero one dash two dash two-three, and NC PIN number two-seven five eight one four eight two one seven is submitted. You see in your packet the condition of the structure and the condition it's in, and staff recommends that you give the authority to move forward with demolition the same. I know Hannah Williams is in the back of the room, our planning director, she can give you more details as well, if you have questions.
Just as a matter of, of order, is it seven nine eight or seven oh eight? Because we've got.
It's seven, seven zero eight.
Seven zero eight, thank you.
Okay, you heard the recommendation for the minimum housing order for seven oh eight Ridgeway Place as presented by staff. Any discussion? And or motion, when you're ready.
Make a motion to approve the minimum housing order.
Have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to approve the minimum housing order for that property as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Number two.
The second item's a minimum housing order for eight thirty-one Montclair Circle. Staff recommends approval of order of abatement directing staff to proceed with notice to vacate and close the property. This is NC PIN two eight four zero five zero three zero four nine. You see in your packet, there's some unsafe conditions of folks living under a deck, and I think our staff's been out there numerous times and served the property owners with that, and so now we need your action to go back and forth to vacate and close of the property. At this time, there's no condemnation of the property.
All right, you heard the minimum housing order request made by the city manager for eight thirty-one Montclair Circle. I'll open it up for any discussion, question, or motion.
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you, I have a motion from, it's not a public hearing, sir, thank.
I thought all this was public?
Not, no, this is not. Well, we were, we were a public meeting a minute ago, you could have asked about it at that time.
I did ask about it a minute ago, and you told me to wait till you brought it up.
Anyway, I have a motion from Councilmember Perkins to approve the eight thirty-one Montclair Circle. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
That's all the items I have.
Okay, thank you for that, and all you have, Mr. Hildebrand. Okay, move on to any recommendations. Our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, there would be nothing from our office at this time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Coming from the mayor's office, I do have the board appointments for, to bring to you. We did bring these up at our May twentieth meeting. These are reappointments, and we have one new appointment going in at this time, and then I have one to recommend to you for down the road. Anyway, for the ABC board, three-year term, Jerry Brooks. Foothills Airport Authority for a two-year term, Joe Gibbons. Lenore Housing Authority, five-year term, Hunter Greer. Our Business Advisory Board for three-year terms, Margaret Forney, Darren McKinney, John Moore, and Sean Williams. The Planning Board and Historic Preservation Commission, three-year term, Curtis Baker, Sharon Bryant, Don Trail Parsons, and a new appointment coming on for three-year term would be Joey Petrack would be taking a seat, a seat that was vacated on the planning board. Board of Adjustments, three-year term, Sharon Bryant and Michael Carecia for those. For the Recreation Advisory Board, we have reappointments for James Robertson, Scott Barnett, these are for four-year term. No, these are for three-year terms, and then Michael Dunne and Rick Pierce for four-year term. We stagger that because of the way the, the board is made up. All those would be for reappointment. And for Lenore Tourism and Development Authority, four-year terms, for Jesse Plaster and Matthew Underwood. These are all reappointments to that. Do have one new one for the Parks and Recreation Board that we'll be recommending tonight, that's Melissa Hung to that. I'm recommending that she be put on that board. We will, we will discuss it tonight, and then we will actually vote on it on our June seventeenth meeting, because we did not present that before, but we do have.
Just for that one.
Just for that one, yes. The others would be, will be voted on tonight. That we have two seats available on that board, and I would be recommending Melissa for that one of the two seats that we have on that. So I'll make that, give that to you in the form of a recommendation from the mayor's office for reappointments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the candidates as presented.
Thank you, I have a motion from Mayor Prokem Stevens to approve the, all the board members and people that we have that were presented tonight. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, we appreciate that, and I'll turn it over to any council members. Anybody have anything to, to discuss tonight for the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to share that June fourteenth, the Freeman Culture Center will be hosting the Sylvia Ann Green Gospel Jazz and Soul Evening of Music and Entertainment. This is a scholarship fundraiser. We were, we did present three scholarships to recipients, and then the Sylvia Ann Green for the community to know and for council and staff that they're welcome to join us, but that's something happening June fourteenth, and I just want to get the word.
What time is it?
It's at four PM.
Four PM.
And it is at the campus. The tickets are fifteen dollars, and that donation will be used to award future scholarships in Ms. Green's name and in the Freeman Culture Center endeavors, so we're looking forward to great support on June fourteenth and hope to see members.
Okay, thank you, sounds like a great, a great event.
That is at the campus.
At the campus, yeah, yeah.
June fourteen. That is Flag Day, by the way.
Burn your flag.
Do what?
Burn your flag.
Oh, don't burn a flag.
No, I said bring it.
Bring a flag, yeah.
Don't burn the flag.
But that is the way you retire a flag.
Well, that's right, that's the way you do it, retire one, yeah, that's for sure. Okay, anything else to come before us tonight?[1794.54]